We can start with approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Did everyone get a chance to review? Yes?
I make a motion to approve minutes from December 6.
A second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
No, great. Okay, so the minutes are approved from the December 2021 meeting and we can move on to regular business. We do not have Francis tonight. For the WLS report, I will relay his notes. And he had a minimal report for this month. He just wanted everybody to know that the WLS Board of Trustees met briefly this past Tuesday, the 11th. They conducted an executive session to review and evaluate the performance of Terry Kirchner, WLS Executive Director, the staff of WLS and the WLS as a whole. And the outcome was generally that the board was pleased with the annual evaluation. So that's the kind of long and short of Francis's report for this month. Hopefully, he will feel better and join us next month. And any questions on that? No, great. So we can move to President's Report. Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. It's nice to see you. Hope everyone is staying healthy and had a lovely holiday, had a chance to relax and regroup with your families. I don't have too much to report out for tonight. We're still chugging away. Still, I believe, on track for end of January completion of our strategic plan. We will be gearing up a whole bunch of stuff this, over the next month or two, including the starting to hold Budget Committee meetings. And I think that's it for me, unless anyone has any questions. Awesome. Love it. Chugging along here. Okay, Tom, Director's Report, please.
Sure. Thank you, Whitney. Library operations, things have slowed a bit because of the increased level of infection of COVID. But, you know, we're still, we're still busy. There are certainly people always in the building using our technology, whether it be public computers or internet, the printer, the Wi-Fi printer as well. Our teen area continues to be hugely popular with lots of activities. It's really great. Children's libraries is also, is also, is busy as well. And study rooms, conference room, also being used quite heavily. But it, but it is, it is quiet, which I understand is the norm in most other WLS libraries. But we're hanging in there. In terms of staff being affected by COVID, we've had a few people, but not an overwhelming number. And we have, you know, instituted the appropriate protocols about, you know, being tested and, and taking, taking the time they need till they feel better, till they're feeling better. And if they have symptoms, they need to stay, you know, longer until those symptoms, symptoms have subsided. So knock on wood, we're really doing quite well in, in that area. So relative to our grant situation, as you know, we're waiting on two significant grants to be approved, New York State Construction Grants, Library Construction Grants, one for $342,000 for the third floor renovation. Another grant, a smaller amount, for the Huguenot Children's Library, $17,813 to replace the the slant fin, slim line, air conditioning units at all three levels. We expect to, to hear from both the New York State Library and the Dormitory Authority when there are questions. Those questions are routed through Elise Burke at WLS. And she's terrific. I don't know how she does it year in, year out with all her work. She balances all of this with with a lot of grace and success. So we're ready to answer your questions. That will happen typically in June. The grants are confirmed and we will likely see the money sometime in the fall, perhaps September, October. And then we'll be ready to start on our, on our third floor and start fixing our air conditioning at HCL. The the grant that we received in October to do fire stopping and other sort of passive fire safety issues has arrived. We're in touch with the architect and we're hoping to schedule and start moving forward within the next few months. I don't have a timetable or schedule, but I will cheer once, once we have something more tangible. Let's see what else. The, I cannot, at this point, disclose these, some grants that are in the offing. I've discussed with Whitney, but it's quite possible that we'll get a good-sized grant that was unsolicited from a family foundation. And so nothing has been confirmed yet, but it could be a reasonably significant amount of money. The sum is not yet confirmed. We're working towards that. And we've been asked not to publicly announce it until, of course, all the details are finalized. And also, there is a, a bequest that may be pending for the library in relation to a volunteer, Karen Allen, who worked at our library as a volunteer, like an employee, for many, many years, volunteering in the local history and the archival area, not just organizing and materials, but actually purchasing materials online through eBay and other sources. She sadly passed away a few years ago. Her will is being brought to probate and it's quite possible we may receive, again, a fairly significant gift with some details still needing to be ironed out before we can really more fully publicly announce that. But all sounds really good. Our reverting back to our New York State Grant, the second floor renovation, which you've heard me drone on forever and ever, is nearly done. We're waiting on just a few things. This Tuesday, the final shelving will be assembled, which will be terrific. It'll look great. And the final piece is where we have new computer furniture, which will hold our public computers. And we're, of course, stuck in this supply chain delay. We're waiting on a few parts and I'm told that they may all arrive and we can get it installed in February. But we're nearly at the end of that, that grant, which is, which is great. I just want to remind you that the, the Trustee Handbook Club is, has begun in 2022. It will be this Tuesday, January 18th, from 5:00 to 6:30 via Zoom. And the topic, pretty pertinent, is budgets and finance. And there will be other Trustee Handbook Club meetings once a month through the month of June 2022.
You said, sorry, it's 5:00 to 6:30, Tom?
Yes, yes. I had sent it out to but it's, I think you have to pre-register. I believe that's the approach.
Correct. Yep. And yep, I missed the one in December, but the other two were really great. And if you can make it, I recommend it's it's really, I find it interesting.
Yeah, there, it sounds like it's a good panel of people that are presenting and worthwhile. Really happy to announce that it seems fairly definite that the AARP Tax Prep Service will return to our library in February, on February 1st. That is, if everything continues to go as planned, as in previous years, they will be providing tax prep assistance and also filing. And it will happen on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But unlike previous years, it will not be a walk-in approach. It will be strictly appointment-based. And they have two models. One is same-day drop-off. And the second model is, is two-visit scan. And you know, it's really amazing that these peoples, these folks, these volunteers, year in, year out, donate their time. And particularly given what's going on, that they're, that they're going to come back in the building with limited, you know, access to the public, but still be here to help our community. I think my staff reported, and even I got phone calls, the one program that was maybe most missed during the pandemic closure was this one, because it really helped lots of people. You know, typically, year in, year out, we served over 1,000 people. So you know, it's a popular, really useful program. So that looks like that will be returning in February. And again, the stress is appointment-based only. Walk-ins will be asked to make an appointment and then, you know, they'll be taken at that point in time. Let's see what else. Another, another positive note is we, in years past, have had homework help through our collaboration with Monroe College, where Monroe, through our federal work-study program, would provide tutors for children in families needing, you know, homework help. And we lost the program for a year, of course, but it looks like we will be able to restart. It will start on January 18th. And I believe it starts at 3:00 in the afternoon. At this point, it's drop-in. We'll see how it works. We may end up taking reservations depending upon, you know, its popularity, but it's exciting to have this program back. It was well-used by lots of folks in the community. Let's see what else. One other thing I just want to mention to you folks, and I need a sense of the board. If you will recall at the I believe it was the November meeting, you folks allowed us to transfer $250,000 into essentially what is called the capital fund, so we could work on capital projects. And we have a project that's about to start. And I just want to make certain that you're comfortable with this project. I think you will be. It's the renovation of the children's restrooms. If you have brought your children to those restrooms in the past at the main library, you know that they're two tiny, dark spaces. And after our flood this summer, there was some damage and we felt that we needed to go forward and repair them. And the decision was made not to retain these two tiny restrooms, which would really only comfortably allow one person, a child, maybe a parent, tight squeeze. We're going to be combining both of those restrooms. We're going to be able to create more space by pushing back and pushing up. We're going to light it far better. If you remember, it's very dark and rather dank. You know, the whole new thing will, new fixtures, of course, a commode, a sink and a urinal, so that could be used for more than one child and enough room, we believe, to allow for an ADA access and also a parent or caregiver, you know, walking in and bringing another child, maybe bringing in a stroller if it's not too large. So so that's a project that we're moving forward with. And I just am asking the board if you're comfortable, you know, moving in this direction.
Tom, how much is the budget for this renovation project?
$50,000.
And so that'll come out of the 250,000 and of that 250, is this the first of that money to be spent?
It is indeed.
Okay.
Do we get a takeoff of the renovation cost from a contractor?
Say that again, Cory, a takeoff?
Did we get it? Yeah. Do we get an estimate from a contractor?
Yes. I believe the contractor is saying $35,000 to do it all. And we had to pay for the, you know, the fixtures that I mentioned. We have to pay for someone to do some core drilling so we can create a drain in the floor, which we hadn't had before. The, the purchase of tile, paint, electrical, we have to cap the we have to cap the sprinkler head too as well.
Okay. Repeat the first part you said.
First part. Oh, the floor, we're going to be redoing the floor and putting tile down, of course, new tile. But we're also creating a drain, which we hadn't had before. Having a drain in a, in a, in a restroom, a public restroom, makes it far easier to clean and also precludes problems when fixtures malfunction. Instead of flooding, there's a better chance of, you know, you know, not inching out into the children's library proper.
Okay. So we're going to install a drain, which I guess we're going to have a plumbing contractor as well?
Yep. Yep. Contractor's bringing his plumber. We're also, as a sidebar, we're, I didn't realize this, but in front of that bathroom is, if you know where it is, there's a sort of like a drywall with red fabric. We removed that fabric and I did not know this, but there is a a water fountain there. And one of the things that we know that our public wants are, you know, water fountains, safe ones. And so we're going to restore that water fountain, you know, and make it sort of bottle-friendly, if you will.
A refillable water bottle station, I think, is what we've been asking for. I see that Daniel has had his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see Dan. Hey, Dan.
Hey, hi. Just real quick, do we have anything in our bylaws or our procurement process when it comes to just going with one contractor versus how many bids we get, one or two?
Right. We're allowed under a certain amount, this amount with this contract.
Like if it's under 20,000 or 5,000 or whatever the case is, or above, or whatever?
Right. The other thing I just wanted to mention, just to, that we're also going to use the plumber separately to restore water fountains on the second and third floor.
Okay, so, so, so we don't. So it's pretty much whatever entity we, we use, right?
Right.
Is that to use? All right. And it doesn't have to follow any MWBE guidelines or, or anything of that?
No, no.
Okay.
I think that's only if we are granted a public funding, public money. And though this technically is, I think, I've asked about our procurement also. And I, it's comforting to know that that's not required.
Great.
All right.
And we should strive, obviously, to do, to, to follow best practices and do our best to, you know, work with diverse vendors as much as possible, of course, but
Agreed.
But it's not, doesn't preclude our getting the work done.
Yeah. As, Tom, do you give some of the estimate from the contractor? Do we hire any consultant who reviewed the contractor? Like, who do we have with the expertise to kind of say, yes, this is a good bid?
Um, we had, we had sort of checked with other libraries that have done bathrooms and said this was a good price. And it was, certainly, the contractor is well-regarded in the community. And it's done worked for us before.
You've had plenty of experience, Tom, with capital projects and overseeing them. So I would imagine that your expertise counts, right, Cory?
For some degree. I mean, we use this contractor to do the stairs at Huguenot Children's Library. And that was a that was actually very successful, came in on time and actually a little under budget.
Great.
That's good.
That's great.
But maybe, maybe Cory, do you want to take a look at it just as?
Yeah, I'd love it. Yeah, take a look at it, please.
I can forward that to you tonight or tomorrow.
All right. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, both of you. That's exciting. And Tom kind of gave me a rundown and I did, I think, combining them into one big bathroom is the way to go, for sure. Because they're tiny, tiny. And it's so convenient to have a bathroom right there for kiddos and caregivers. I think that's wonderful.
And to make it, it's going to be large enough to allow for a family to use it. And it's going to be bright and clean and it's just will be a better experience than now, which, quite frankly, is, I mean, you, you, most of you have kids and you've used that, our children's library and use that space. It's, it's a challenge. So we're excited about this improvement.
That's great.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And my final few things, very quickly. The, the friends continue. Despite, you know, the pandemic, they are there with Amy, with Amy Teets, the president, who is just amazing, you know, is working. You know, but not getting paid. She's really quite amazing. She's never stopped really coming in for the most part. And she's there and she's one of the main people. Many of the friends are sort of offline because of their age and the pandemic, reasonable fears. But the store continues to be open and it's earning good money. It's, it's interesting. And Amy tells me that, that as a sidebar, in terms of the pandemic, many people, as you know, have bought their own books. And many of those folks, once they finished, donated them to the library. So Amy thinks we have a really good collection of fairly new fiction and nonfiction for people that are interested. They are limiting their donations to two small boxes or bags. And as we mentioned earlier, we have a Foundation Board meeting scheduled for January 18th next week. Their annual appeal letter has gone out and they haven't come up with sums, but it seems as if people were responding. And planning for the May 12 Foundation Gala is starting to ramp up. I think they're going to have their formal first committee meeting in the next few weeks. So that's all exciting. And, and that's it. Thank you.
That's great, Tom. Do you want to, do you want to report out on personnel?
Yep, I do. Thank you. Just find it here. We have three actions, so I'm going to read off the new hire and the two staff members that have resigned and ask for a board member to, to make a motion and then a second and then, then a vote. Our new hire, excited to announce, full-time person, a library assistant, both working, circulation, and the first floor information desk. Her name is Amanda Burgos. Her starting salary is $51,873.12. And her start date was January 3rd of, of this year, 2022. And we had two staff members that sadly left. One is Melissa Zembas. She was the adult services, like, library assistant. She was hourly. Her last day was December 29th of 2021. Her salary was $28.25. We also saw an hourly librarian, one in the children's room, Kate Kathleen Waters. She left, very sadly. She was really tremendous. Her last day also was December 29th, 2021. And her salary was $32.33. So I'm hoping the board could, you know, make a motion regarding this.
Yep, I can make a motion to approve the hire of Amanda Burgos and the resignation of Melissa and Kate, as described by Tom. Can I get a second?
A second.
Can I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So those actions are approved, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I also have, for your consideration, our pages, whose salaries will be going up because, of course, the New York State's minimum wage for 2022 is now in place. Of course, New York City has two different scales for big employers or small employers. Long Island and Westchester has a different fee, a dollar amount, and the rest of New York State. The minimum wage as of December 31st, 2021 is $15. So what I will do is name the pages and tell you what their new salary will be. Dawn DiNacolo, her new salary rate will be $15.25. Jessica Hernandez, another page, her new salary rate will be $15.44. Diara Johnson Smith, her new rate, hourly rate, will be $15.20. Urania Moraga, her new rate will be $16.30. Evelyn Ochoa, her rate will be $15. Malak Omnau will, her new rate will also be $15. Lena Vargisi, her new rate will be $15. And we have a community relations position that's currently vacant. We're hoping to fill it in the near future. And that position will also go to the $15 rate. And so I'm wondering if I could have a board member move and then second and then vote on these new wages for our page staff.
Move that we accept the wages for the new staff.
Great. I can second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So, yep, those are all approved. Thank you, Tom.
Much, board. Believe me, our pages, we have a great page staff and they work really hard. And they, during the closing the library, they have helped us better organize the library. They've helped us doing a massive reading project. They're, they're really terrific. So it's, I think it's well-deserved. Just to give you some updates in regards to some personnel matters, as you folks know, we are in the process of interviewing candidates for the programmer position. And we interviewed four candidates via Zoom and I had library department heads involved. We narrowed it down to two very well-qualified candidates. We brought them in last week and this to tour the library, to talk to department heads and also their colleagues that would be working closely with them. And so we're in the process now of looking at the candidates and hoping to make an offer sometime next week. Also, very exciting regarding our Assistant Director position. As, as you folks may recall, earlier in December, we interviewed nine candidates via Zoom. And it was a very strong field of candidates. They had a lot to offer. And it was, the participants were, of course, myself, but with department heads participating with the idea that these, these folks have a real sense of the library and can evaluate the candidate that might be the best fit. Of course, with future steps involving the board. So out of those nine candidates that we interviewed, we had a Zoom meeting with the staff and Whitney also. And we decided to bring back four well-qualified candidates for a second interview that would be an in-person interview that would involve library staff, a tour, and library board members. Today, when Whitney and I discussed it, she asked me if we could schedule the candidates on Future Fridays, which we certainly can. And I would love for, in addition to Whitney, at least two other board members to participate. You know, and I can, I'll send you the times. And if you can come to the building, that would be great. We might not need you for the entire time, but giving you an opportunity to meet these candidates would be important because, of course, they will be an administrator, the Assistant Director, and then could have future advancement too as well.
So I'll just, I'll just add to that, that if we have interest from more than three of us total, we can split up to have, you know, a few of us at a time in shorter increments, so that we can, we can make sure everyone who wants to has a chance to spend time with these candidates.
Thank you, Whitney. Yeah, we're, we're more than willing to accommodate board members, however, however they like and according to their schedules. And I did reach out to all four candidates before the holiday and said to them, you know, we're very interested in you. Are you still interested? All four very happily said yes. But I'm also aware that time is moving and other opportunities may present themselves. So I'm hoping to try to start scheduling these, these Friday interviews starting very soon. And I will keep you all posted. Let's see, just a few other things. Library and two children's position was posted. And we're, we're looking at the applications. There weren't very many, unfortunately. And very importantly, we are hoping to formally create a librarian to children's services whose specialty or focus would be bilingual. The services in regards to being a Spanish speaker and also someone who could go into the Spanish community and communicate, communicate about all the wonderful programs that we're having at the library and also receive input and feedback about what we aren't doing that we need to do. Civil service has gotten the documentation from us. And we're hoping that on the 26th of January, when they meet, they will approve this position. And we think it's an important one in terms of being able to, you know, really service our entire community. And that's it. And that's it. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Tom. Does anyone have questions? Nope. Good. So if that's the case, we can move to committee reports. Starting with budget committee, I know we, well Chuck, you're the, I believe.
Yeah. I've got to schedule the meeting. So thank you, Tom, for reaching out and for kind of giving a date when you think you'll have a preliminary draft budget. So I'll reach out to you and Jean and the relevant other members of the board and get the first meeting scheduled.
That's great. Thank you. Buildings and grounds.
No, no report this month.
Okay. Community relations.
Yes. Give me one second.
Let me know if you want to share anything on the screen, Danielle, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I will be sharing something towards the end, okay?
Great.
So this is from our community support specialist Denise Link. Here are some highlights of the Help and Learning Center from December 2021. ESL in-person classes, Nourishaw Public Library, winter and spring continues. The English Language Institute, Westchester Community College, offers courses for beginning students, level zero to two, as well as advanced, as well as for advanced beginners, low intermediates, level three and four. If the registration is robust, expanding space in library will be used to support classes. So great to see that type of partnership with WCC. Continue outreach, tabling of People USA and Project Hope. Project Hope is a COVID-19 crisis counseling program that provides information, education, and emotional support. Again, it's ongoing, especially with the dips, the rise in dips that we have with Omicron and COVID across the board. I would, you know, any individual, either senior citizen or anyone in our community that is looking for help, guidance, support in regards to COVID, food insecurity, whatever, please reach out to them. Civic citizenship classes for 2022 continue with attorneys, Sanika Dixon. They're doing Zoom sessions Thursday, February at 6:00 PM. I did not get a date on that. You can register on the website via calendar. Job search coach Rebecca Mason is available to assist individuals looking for new or improved job, writing resumes, cover letters, completing application, doing the job search in the internet, networking. Attendance and sessions per month have been steady and a job search program for teens is in the work in collaboration with the teen library. Healthcare navigator Elizabeth Blackwell is available virtually to assist with open enrollment to purchase change or renew coverage in New York State Qualified Health Plan and enroll new coverage to Medicaid Child Health Plus and enroll new essential plan or lower income New Yorkers. COVID-19 testing and vaccine boosters and shot appointment system was increased over the holidays. As many of you know, personally, myself trying to get a test was impossible during that time. Community outreach at the mobile food pantry sponsored by the city school district of Nourishaw, feeding Westchester on 11222 to inform on Nourishaw Public Library programs, resources, and free books. In addition to that, the NAACP is going to be hosting a Martin Luther King celebration via Zoom. You can check it out on their NAACP Nourishaw Facebook or their website. They have an event happening, I believe, starting at 9:00 AM via Zoom celebration on that. And one interesting thing is to see this great partnership. I personally, as a nonprofit leader, have worked with this department and Iona College students. Denise Link was able to work with Iona College students and their goal was to find a way to improve Nourishaw Public Library and its services. They work with private and nonprofit organizations to kind of figure out what's not working or perhaps enhance an area that needs improvement. So if I could share my screen, just briefly, I'll go through their slides if it's okay. Go back to the Zoom, share screen. Oh wait, I should open the slide, right? Yeah, hold on. One moment, please. Perfect. So. Here we go, share. Can you guys see the screen?
Yep.
Cool. So pretty much the way students were looking at this as a as a platform or a digital platform for indoor and mapping, pretty much if you're tech savvy, as you know, a lot of things have gone virtual from even in the city of Nourishaw, historical sites in Nourishaw, there's an app for that where you can get a description, whatever, and it'll take you on a map. They've used it for the scavaganza. There's so many platforms that are synced with mapping. So they kind of gave introduction. Stack Map improves the library user's experience. It empowers patrons. It gives patients the confidence to find what they're looking for in your space. It saves time, maximizes librarians' bandwidth and reduces frustration of wandering. Map complex spaces make even most complex spaces easy to get around and navigable for patrons. And privacy, locate items independently without sharing information, needs, and interests. It provides a clear navigation to library resources. Patrons are able to easily integrate with our website, with our digital interface, with our catalog. And it manages updates in one simple dashboard. Obviously, you would have to have someone or a super user to update that information. Collection mapping. After a user searches a library catalog, they see a Map It kind of logo, if you will, button that displays a map of the floor where their item is located. I know right now our library users can log in and check where the book is located. But this really is kind of like a GPS, if you will, of where to get the material that you're looking for. Computer availability mapping. Users see available computers, specialty software and hardware. Digital maps can be embedded anywhere, digital displays or websites. I always look at this and when I was reviewing this as functionality is, does this reduce the I always look at it as a case managing, but does it reduce the customer service interaction within the patron and the librarian dealing with and helping the user? Perhaps there may be some benefits to it. There may be some not benefits to it. It's an analysis and overlook that has to kind of like really be looked at. Room mapping. Users see where rooms are located in a facility. Study rooms, lecture halls, conference spaces, offices, and more. Custom integration, enhancing your existing reservation systems and other online tools. I know historically, in my experience, you call community relations and say, hey, is it possible to reserve X, Y, and Z room? Is this available? Is it user-friendly for the individual that wants a study room? They talked about Explore, similar to like kiosks, Explore enables users to browse your library's physical space and resources out of a kiosk, tablet, or website. Useful locating sections, the collection by subject, as well as any location, place, space, or room within the library. And then they talked about how to get started, you know, what would the library provide? You know, basic floor plans, spreadsheets containing and starting and ending call numbers, locations. What would StatMac provide with all the user-friendly front-end scripts and limited tech support administrative dashboards? And then they talked about the FAQs. Can StatMac integrate with my catalog? Yes, they can integrate with your catalog. Can a catalog within a library, how will it work? If your library is part of a shared catalog and that every branch is on board to get StatMac, that's fine. We are able to map and connect single library branches where the other branch gets tired. So they did a very extensive FAQ. And then these two questions is how much time does StatMac take to set up? About a four-week process dedicated. And then the question is, are physical locations shrinking? Why should we map? And they talked about the lack of use regardless, even the collections are shrinking, circulation and statistics will always be available. So it was very impressive to see undergraduate students do this kind of research of how to make it in a perspective of these young adults of how to make it accessible, right? And how can navigate? And as you know, a lot of these young people, and in my experience, I've worked with young people, they interact less person-to-person and would rather do everything via technology on an app or any kind of application. So I, you know, it was just a great presentation, but I thought it was a well-thought-out presentation of a resource that perhaps we haven't looked at as a library. Perhaps it does exist, Tom. I don't know if you want to give your thoughts about it if they presented this to you. You're muted.
You're muted, Tom. We can't hear you.
All right. Sorry. Thanks, Whitney. Actually, thank you, Daniel. I am familiar with this. I actually went to a Public Library Association conference a few years ago in which this company was represented. I sort of loved the project because it's so obvious that it can help people, you know, find material. I mean, our library, like most libraries, are not intuitive. We have three levels. And it was a cool project. I think it's not inexpensive. And we were also, you know, so cost is an issue and we were also cutting over to our, you know, our new evergreen system. But there is one library in the county that does have it that I know of, Scarsdale, of course. They just did their 25 million-plus renovation. And one of the things that the director did was to introduce StackMap. I've spoken to her about it. She says it's working out. I'm hoping to go there sometime to see that and actually see the whole library. But one of the issues that we know that we need to deal with and we're hoping to come back to you once at least the second floor is done, is we think our signage in our library is frankly not really wonderful, wayfinding, you know. And so we're trying to work on that and find a way to better direct people to places. And part of that, Dan, is exactly what you talked about. StackMap would be part of helping people find things. And I think you're right. There are, a lot of the younger generation would rather use technology to find things. But it's sort of similar to our self-checkout when we introduced it. We knew that some people would love it and would go to it automatically and other people wanted that human connection. You know, it's very individual.
Yeah.
So looking at it.
For sure. I'm interested to see how Scarsdale, because they're not as big as we are, if I remember the location. But it would be interesting to see how, if anything, literally their entire catalog is in the system. That would be pretty awesome.
I agree. And, you know, we will go there and I'd even go with a group of library trustees because I think there's probably a lot to learn there because it's so new and they've done a lot of really interesting things. And one bonus, parking is free. Quite aspire to yet. But yeah, no, Dan, I think when I saw it at the PLA conference, I was sort of like, wow, wouldn't that be cool?
Yeah, no, I, when I saw the report, it's just great to have college students from our local college, you know, using, you know, our facility and services as a study platform. So it's great to get the report back. So and that's all I have for community relations.
Thank you.
That's very cool. Thank you. There was also, just, Dan, while you were talking, it jogged my memory regarding an article that was sent around. I don't know, maybe last week. It's in the Washington Post. It's an opinion piece, but the title is "The Golden Age of Public Libraries Dawns Again." And it's just talking about how public libraries are emerging as one of the bright spots. And there are new and newly renovated libraries opening. There have been many over the past couple of years and there are more to come. And they're just beautiful and the verbiage here says, "Many are exemplars of what great community spaces can and should be." So it's always great to read about that. If you haven't seen it, I can send it around. Next up, we have finance committee. Is that Corey?
Nothing to report right now, but we'll have a report in February.
Great. And Lucille, personnel committee.
Well, I am delighted to report that after a number of months of conversations and discussions, Personnel Committee and, well, Personnel Committee and Library reached an agreement with the union members for a two-year contract that includes salary increases of 2.5% for each year of the two years. And a few other things that I can go into detail with, but removal of sick bonus, longevity bonus, and a number of additional day for the bereavement. And an understanding that if the library budget does not pass, then the increase will not go into effect as it stands, but will be at a lower rate. So we.
1%, is that right, Lucille?
It's 1.5, 1.5%, 1.5%. So this was, there was a lot of patience and discussion back and forth. I really would like to extend my thanks to my fellow committee members and Tom for his leadership. But I would like to put this forth before the board and I can state it again if it's helpful for everybody to hear it a bit more clearly for a vote.
I have one question before we vote. Yep. So if, so for, if the budget does not pass and it reverts to a 1.5% increase, that's just for the first year? And then what would happen for the second year?
So if the library budget for fiscal years 2021, 22, and/or 22, 23 are defeated, the increase to the schedule that will go into effect will be 1.5% instead of the 2.5%.
So if it passes, say hypothetically, because it's a two-year agreement, it passes this year, but not next year, it would just revert back. So it's just the same. Okay, got it. Thank you. Does anyone have questions? And I also, I know how, you know, speaking with Tom and a little bit with Lucille, I know how hard the Personnel Committee worked. And also just extending appreciation and, you know, heard great things about the rapport and leadership. And thank you very much. I know that it's not easy, but it sounds like everyone came to an agreement. And thank you. That's a lot of work. No one has other questions? I can make a motion to approve the, what is the phrasing, Lucille? You want to, it's making a motion to approve the increase?
I need Tom's help for the phrasing of this one, but it's making a motion to approve the two-year contract with the CSCA union. For, do I need to note the specifics, Tom?
You know, Lucille, I don't think so. I think it can be as simply as to ask the board to approve the draft agreement as adopted by the Personnel Committee and the CSCA library union leadership.
Okay, what Tom said.
Yes. You're making a motion to.
I am making a motion, please, for the board to adopt the draft agreement as adopted or approve the draft agreement as adopted by the Nourishaw Public Library Personnel Committee and the CSCA union leadership.
I'll second.
Yep. All in favor? I.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No? Great. So that passes. Thank you. That is approved. Any abstain, abstentions? No? Great. So that passes. Thank you. That is approved. Good job, everybody.
Could I, could I just, to thank Lucille, her leadership was really terrific. And Sarah and Daniel and Deidra and the union leadership. I, I think, you know, it was a challenging, long period of time, but everyone acted in the most professional and civil. It was a really good group of meetings and very, the conversation was always positive and understanding. And I think that's terrific. And I know that's not always the case when these situations come to hand. So kudos to Lucille and the Personnel Committee and also to the union leadership.
Good. Thank you. Anything else for Personnel Committee? I mean, that's a big thing. If that's it, great. We can move to Policy Committee.
Nothing to report right now, Whitney.
Great, thanks. Special Projects Committee, that would be me reporting out. I already talked about where we are with our strategic plan. Again, I think we're on track, more or less, to be able to report out for next month. And we can, in their interim, as appropriate, post whatever is available on our website. Does anyone have any questions about that process? Crickets. Great. This is New Year's crickets. I love it. Great. Okay. So with that, that brings us to our public discussion. Do we have anyone who is here for comment? Jean?
I guess it would only be Marjorie. Is she still there?
Looks like, hang on a second. I see, nope. I do not see Marjorie. I see Marjorie is here as a panelist now.
I just want to appreciate that. That was a great meeting. I appreciate everything everybody's doing. And it was very heartening to hear, Tom, about the unsolicited grants that, you know, you weren't able to disclose, you know? But it's, it just shows you how much the library means to people and that they dedicate that kind of thing in their, in their will and, and otherwise. So just a lot of appreciation for all of you and thank you very much.
Thank you, Marjorie. Happy New Year to you. And thanks for being here. Okay. Is there any other comment, question, anything? And if not, then I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Great. I, I banged the proverbial gavel, gavel and we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.